Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Glenorkie City Council on Monday, 26th of May, 2025. I'm Sue Hickey, Mayor of Glenorkie, and chairperson of this afternoon's meeting. We acknowledge the Murrinina people as traditional owners of this land. We recognise that the Tasmanian Aboriginal people are the original owners and continuing custodians of the land, sky, country and waters of this island of Tririto. We pay our respect to Aboriginal elders, past and present. We commit to working in a way that welcomes and respects all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. Joining me in chambers today is the deputy mayor, Russell Yedgle, who has brought a glass of water, Alderman Justin Stringer, Alderman Peter Ridler, Alderman Tim Marks, Alderman Shane Alderton, Alderman Josh Cockshut, Alderman Stuart Slade, and Alderman Stephen King, and our CEO, Tony McMillan. We have Acting Director of Infrastructure and Development, Luke Chu, and we also have Tracy Erlich, Director of Community and Corporate Services. Before we open this agenda, I take this opportunity to make a statement about our workplace health and safety. Glenorkie City Council takes its work, health, and safety very seriously, and this includes physical and psychological safety. We have a duty to ensure that a safe workplace is provided for all our employees, elected members, contractors, volunteers, and members of the public, whom may be present at tonight's meeting. Council meetings form part of the council's workplace, and it is expected that everyone who attends council meetings will behave in a polite and respectful manner, which is usually the case. Council has endorsed a statement of intent setting out how we, as elected members, have agreed to conduct ourselves in representing the people of Glenorkie. In accordance with this, any disagreement should be expressed respectfully, remembering both during debate and in decision-making, we are elected to be your representatives and people of Glenorkie and to make our city the best it can be. Finally, I note that the open section of this meeting is being livestreamed, and an audiovisual recording of the meeting will occur in accordance with council's recording of council meetings policy. Members of the public are not permitted to make audio or visual recordings of council meetings. We have eighteen items on our agenda this afternoon, and agenda item one is apologies, and I believe we have an apology from councillor Molly Kendall. Do I have someone to confirm the minutes of the open meeting of the 28th of April? Thank you, Alderman Slade, and I think it was Alderman Cockshut, was it?
Thank you, Alderman Marks.
Oh, Alderman Marks, thank you.
I've got nothing further to add to, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion? No, I'll took the motion. All those in favour, carried unanimously. Announcements by the chair, nice and short tonight. Firstly, the pool, the repair and reopen of the existing pool. We are in the final stages of contract negotiations with a preferred contractor for the repair of the pool. I do understand this has been quite exasperating for everybody concerned. The final designs and costings have been agreed upon, and we are expecting to receive the signed contract in the next few days. I commit to making a public announcement about who the contractor is, the final scope of works, and the costings once we have this contract signed. Now, on to the redevelopment of a new facility. Following the recent federal election, we unfortunately didn't receive any commitment to fund the development of a pool. This doesn't mean that we're giving up on getting the $83.8 million. The advocacy plan has been prepared outlining steps to continue lobbying the government for funding, encourage and support community to continue grassroots advocacy campaigns for funding, and keep the community informed about funding advocacy progress. We are determined to keep the pool at the top of mind for politicians and candidates in the future state and federal elections. And I personally believe that this is a vital community piece of infrastructure that's needed for the community for the next forty years. The Golden Years Club. Negotiations with the preferred tenant for the Golden Years Club are still ongoing. Again, a bit slower than we expected. However, we are committed to making an announcement on who the new tenant is once these negotiations are finalised. And this is because, it all relates to transparency, I want to stress that council aims to be as transparent as possible at all times. As a rule, we do not aim to keep anything secret from the community. We are, however, required to apply proper commercial negotiation procedures and practices when dealing with contractual discussions and/or arrangements. Our practice is to make public announcements as soon as possible once commercial arrangements are finalised. And we do want the best outcome for the community with anything that we do in this space. Some good news. The Glenorkie Sports Centre. I can confirm that state government have lodged the development application for the sports centre, multi-purpose sports centre on the Clermont College site. Council officers are waiting for feedback from Taswater before advertising the DA for comment, but here is a short video to build the excitement for the proposed development. There you go, that was exciting.
It was a short video.
I think we'll just try that again.
Take two.
Can imagine.
Okay, you just have to imagine sound. It's got a really catchy tune behind this.
Can't you handle it?
No.
Noise complaints.
Email the link around to you all. Yeah, I'll do that, and then you can watch it in more detail.
It's to be nice, just to say, I know it's a little bit stupid, but you can see it's going to be an ultra-emboden facility with four multipurpose courts, there'll be a canteen, maybe I can just adlib, and there's a lovely hall. It's also going to be all disability-friendly, and lots of people can go there with headphones or coffee. As we go down, oh, there we are, we're in the hall. And I believe this will be suitable for basketball. Will it be suitable for netball?
Yeah, it's supposed to be volleyball.
Volleyball, pickleball. Badminton?
Uh, could be, depends if they put the pole holes in.
Anyway, there you can see that it is a really good facility. We can't wait to get it up and running, but it does have process, as does everything that needs planning. So I encourage the government to work closely with the council as possible to get this magnificent centre up and running. Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to the North Chigul Soccer Hub. The North Chigul project has seen the construction of new club rooms that include change rooms, amenities, and a new club room space, or function space. The works are now completed, and we are working with Andrew Wilkie and Carol Brown's office to find a suitable date for an official opening. There it is. It actually looks a lot nicer now with the grounds a bit more attended to. And the Metro Club has already been given access to the change room facilities which are downstairs. It is a really inviting visitor's section there, and great views over the grounds. Now, the Glenorkie CWA, I was thrilled to read about the revival of the Glenorkie branch of the Country Women's Association at sixteen Albert Street, Moona. I'm particularly thrilled that the CWA are aiming to be inclusive of women from diverse backgrounds and engage closely with recent arrivals to our city. One of the most multicultural councils in Tasmania, it's important that all clubs and community organisations in Glenorkie promote inclusion and multicultural participation to strengthen community ties, so we wish them well. Now, pecuniary interest. Does anyone have a pecuniary interest they'd like to declare? No. Notice to previous questions taken on notice, so we have two questions there from Manfred Gutman from West Moona, and they're in your agenda. And now moving on to public question time. We have received, one, two, three, four questions from Chris Lemme in relation to the Glenorkie War Memorial Pool, and they've been answered in the agenda as well. And so we move on to public question time. Oh, and also we have a question there with notice from Angela Stirk from Rosetta, and that's about the Moona Arts Centre, and again, the answer is in the agenda. So public question time. This is an ordinary meeting of the council for the primary purpose of elected members debating and deciding on council issues. In accordance with local government meeting procedure regulations, council will allocate fifteen minutes during each council meeting to invite members of the public to ask questions relating to the activities of council. Council's full policy is stated in the agenda, but I would like to bring your attention to the following rules. Members of the public are to announce their name and residential address before asking a question, which will be recorded in the minutes. Questions to be put succinctly and in the form of question or comment. Questions must not be inflammatory, abusive, inflammatory, contain a personal tact, or otherwise breach any rules of the meeting which have been explained by the chairperson. Chairperson may limit the number of questions asked by each member of the public. And I think we only have two guests here tonight, so we won't have to limit it to two minutes. As the chairperson, I have a responsibility to maintain a safe environment for elected members and council staff. And as members of the public, you are responsible for ensuring your conduct adheres to the rules. Fortunately, or actually fortunately, we do not tolerate behaviour that contravenes these rules, and any person who behaves otherwise will be asked to leave the meeting. But I'm sure that's not going to happen, and I appreciate your cooperation to have an orderly meeting. Mr. Gutman, would you like to come up to the table?
Major Gutman, yes, good sir. Good sir. Uh, this afternoon, thank you for time. I've got three short questions.
Okay, all right.
The council reflect the false medical and scientific claims CEO Tony McMillan used on February twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five in his attempt to clear council from responsibility and liability of the continuation of COVID vaccines in our community. Since I've provided ample evidence to the contrary. Two, will council in light of TGA four R two five dash zero zero five eight showing TGA internal communication and the knowledge of contamination and integration risks ask for in the additional independent testing of the COVID vaccines to ensure the safety of the community? Will council seek a full financial audit into contracts that involved the CEO, Mr. McMillan, in light of the grotesque oversight to ensure the community has not been defrauded by third parties?
Fine, I think we'll have to take that one on notice, Mr. Gutman, as usual, and give an answer to the next council meeting.
Thank you.
You too. So no other questions? Okay, so now we're moving on to petitions addressing council deputation, and we ask Ms. Mall approved from Glenorkie. And your subject is positive youth pathways.
My address today relates to youth offending in the Glenorkie region. I refer specifically to the two-related incidents at Big W. I acknowledge that this behaviour is of concern, but it pains me to say that I concur with many in the community that the ensuing mayhem and reports of planned mass violence by youths was exacerbated by a politician contacting the mercury to newly report that they had written a letter to the Premier about their concerns. Considering that this took place in the run-up to federal elections was doubly unfair to the Premier. His knee-jerk response was to appease the public with a slogan, 'Adult Time, Adult Crimes'. That is unlikely to happen, in that the youth detention centre is obsolete. Imprisoning children with adults will only serve to convert them into hardened criminals and serial offenders. My research and consultation with Inspector Jason Klug indicates that incidents of crime have dropped in 2025. Data indicates that fifty-seven offenders were responsible for fifty percent of the crimes committed in Tasmania. I petitioned Parliament in 2024. Said petition was tabled by Ella Hadad MP on 13th November, requiring a response from the government by 5th of May, 2025. This CBD crimes petition called on our government to ensure greater police presence in the shopping precincts of Moona, Glenorkie, and Clermont. It also called on government to fund more CCTV cameras, with Taskpol having access to them in real time. The petition called for a security kiosk in the bus mall in Glenorkie to be manned by police during high-risk periods of the day. I can only assume that my petition contributed to the emergence of Task Force Respect. Inspector Klug confirmed that there will be increased visibility in the shopping precincts of Moona, Glenorkie, and Clermont, and that more CCTV cameras will be in operation. There was no mention of a security kiosk in the bus mall. However, a manned police vehicle was stationed at the bus mall during peak hours. There's a lot more that can be done to lower the incidence of youth offending. We need to keep our young people engaged to steer them away from a life of crime. I'm the president of the Dare to Dream Foundation Incorporated in Tasmania. The foundation forges, it's a new foundation, in Tasmania. The foundation forges partnerships with local, national, and multinational businesses, and with mentors, sporting heroes, and celebrities to provide opportunities for disadvantaged youths to realise their dreams and aspirations. The time has come for the people of Glenorkie and our council to settle historic grievances for the greater good of the community. Our council with respect needs to revert to grassroots community engagement. A lack of perceived transparency and the absence of inclusivity is a breeding ground for suspicion and conspiracy theories. The people of Glenorkie ought to be this council's priority. I sincerely believe that the people around this table will be amenable to engaging with community advocates, activists, and volunteers in a transparent and consultative manner to lobby both state and federal governments for funding relating to the proposed Glenorkie War Memorial Pool complex and other vital facilities to keep our restless young people engaged. We can move mountains as a team. The voice of a united municipality is a force to be reckoned with. Together, we can be stronger.
Thank you very much, Miss Cro. And if you had any part in helping us with the, what's it called, Task Force Respect, thank you. I think we all appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Any questions? No, okay.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Rose, do you want to ask a question?
Your personal question.
So?
Sure.
No? So? Oh, right, course I have to guess, sir. Okay, now we move on to item eight, activities of the mayor. Thank you, Alderman. Oh, I was gonna, I thought Alderman Cockshut first. Alderman Slade, you can second it if you don't mind. And Alderman Cockshut.
Uh, thanks, ma'am. No questions at the moment. I'm a busy man.
It has been a busy month. Thank you. Alderman Slade, anything?
No, I've got nothing, thanks.
Anyone got a comment?
Busy month.
It has been a very busy month. Yes, all right, so there's no discussion. Let's move that motion. All those in favour, please say aye or raise your hand. Yes, thank you, carried unanimously. Now we have a statement on commitment on community safety, which I hope will appeal to our audience. And can I have someone read this, please? Thank you, Alderman Slade, second to third. Thank you, Alderman Alderton. Would you like to speak to it, Alderman Slade?
Thanks, ma'am. Yeah, look, as part of any organisation that has a commitment to safety, you have policies in place and other things, actions, things, but it's important when you start to have a statement of commitment or sometimes refer to a statement of intent. There's one here prepared here, and it has been through many, many different areas as other people looked at and other people made contribution. I think it's pretty fair, actually. I think it's a good start for this organisation. We have them here in this council for OHNS, workplace safety. And I think it's important that we have one for what we believe is very important at the present moment, that's safety within our community. It's not war and peace. These are not meant to be war and peace. They're meant to be highlight what we actually are trying to do as an organisation. The purpose is very clearly there, pointed out by the CEO, and I think the CEO for his contribution is. But after this, and if it is adopted and whatever, that forms part of what we actually stand for in this organisation on this particular area of safety, community safety, should I say. And from there, things like policies and other things like that will actually be built on. So upon those grounds, that's why I support it. I think it's a good start. I think it adds on to the proactive way that we go about things in the city, now in particular addressing community safety, which at the present moment is a very important item.
I agree. Thank you. Alderman King.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd just like to concur with Alderman Slade's comments, and thank, also thank the CEO for his initiative in pushing forward with this and working with us all to come up with a document that I think is a good starting point. I believe this is living document, that it'll never be resulted something to start with, and I think it's a great start. So thank you, CEO, for your advocacy.
Anyone else? Thank you, Alderman Alderton.
Yes, I concur with Alderman Slade and Alderman King's statement, and the only thing I'd just go anyway, would it be possible to briefly put the statement up on the screen for the people on social media and in the room? Is that possible or not?
Are we just going to find it?
It's good, thanks.
Be in the attachments.
Very narrative front, the first attachment.
That's one.
Anyone else like to have a discussion while we get to the statement now? No? Well, I'd like to also support and say thank you to the CEO who did the initial putting it all together and had a lot of words spoken from contributors. It is just a statement of expectation and does highlight the fact that we have a very close working relationship with Tasmania Police, and that we want to continue working with government, business, and community organisations in speaking up for the community and building a stronger community. Unfortunately, you know, it is not our entire responsibility, so we don't, we can't go around locking up people or anything else, but we are saying no to crime and antisocial behaviour, and we want everyone to feel welcome and safe in Glenorkie, regardless of where they come from. And so the statement's basically about crime, antisocial behaviour, and about the council's roles and responsibilities. So there you are, you have it up on screen. Might have to scroll it a bit. So you can see it's about please partnerships, advocacy, community, infrastructure, and the CCT cameras. Some of our cameras have facial recognition technology, and we've just put some into Clermont. Would that be correct, Luke?
Yes.
So about how many do we have in total across Moona, Glenorkie, Clermont?
I think it's approaching sixty.
Yeah, I thought it was forty, so sixty sounds better. Thank you. We'll look into that. Okay, so that's cast, Stuart, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll please.
Sorry, deputy?
Sorry, for the, for my.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So at the last council meeting, I certainly asked some difficult questions around community safety, and I guess since then we had a really open and frank discussion around the table, and I'm really proud that we were able to do that with mutual respect and a desire to keep our community safe. So I was really pleased to see that and to work with the council team, led by Tony. So really good job for everyone on doing this. As a local government, we're required to provide for the health and safety and the welfare of our community, represent and promote the interests of our community, ensure peace and order among governments. So I really see that this statement is not just symbolic in nature, but it really does drill down in terms of what our responsibilities are and to call out and to, you know, to highlight what we're about here. So I'm pleased that we've got the statement in place.
Yeah, I agree with it. I think this is a problem for all councils across Tasmania. It would be good to see us all work together on a similar statement together. Okay, Alderman Slade.
Yes, ma'am, I just want to reiterate, I'm really pleased. If one page, when you move on and make these statements of intents or commitments into actually like a policy-driven document, you lose the whole means of it. And at the end of the day, it's two things. It just affirms our commitment, and secondly, the fact is that saying no to crime and antisocial behaviour. So it's pretty straightforward, and we're going to do this on behalf of our community.
You do everything within our power.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to put that to vote. All those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. Now we are moving on to the waste management fees and charges, item ten. Who would like to hand up this one? Thank you very much, Alderman Cockshut. Second to please, thank you very much. Sorry, Alderman Stringer and then Alderman Cockshut. Alderman Stringer?
I think this is fairly straightforward with the increase of the fees over the next financial with our waste management. As you can see, that most of the increases are on average around that five percent mark, and there was a few variant here and there, but best to keep up with the inflation and the cost of doing business within the council as well. So it's just a necessary factor that we need to do it. That's why I need to speak on it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Oh, right, that's a close draw. Thank you, Alderman Cockshut.
Thank you, ma'am. I agree with my fellow Alderman's comments. And one thing I'd like to point out as well, which is in the documentation, with the residential food, organic, and green, organic collection services, or FOGO as we like to call it, since the council implemented that process, we've been able to divert approximately 25,000 tonnes of organic waste from landfill. So I think that's a really terrific result, and obviously council were first to mark with that approach in terms of level government, I believe. So with how we went about the policies. So I think it's proven to bear success so far. There is a slight increase of five percent, but given what we've just discussed then, it is to mitigate ongoing costs. So I think that's a really good outcome for the environment as well.
Thank you. Alderman Alderton.
Okay, thank you, mate. I would just also like to add to the conversation. And the community are well aware that the statewide waste levy does impact on our waste increases on annual. From the community, you're well aware that the statewide waste levy does impact on our waste increases on an annual basis. And I mean, this levy was initially implemented at twenty dollars per tonne, it's now increased to forty four dollars a tonne. So that basically contributes to almost two percent of this five percent increase. And that money collected doesn't go to council, it goes back to state government and in twenty twenty two, it was around three million dollars. Just imagine what a council would do with that sort of money if we had it instead of passing on to the state government.
Thank you, any further discussion, thank you, Alderman Ridley.
Yes, Mayor, thanks. I concur with all the charges that are there, but I do have a concern with tyres. The largest tyre on this, I'm going to accept, is the full drive, it was full drive with rims, I think, twenty two dollars, was it? What about the large truck tyres that are, and I mean the big stuff, wasn't on here?
Okay, well, I'm director, acting director.
Thank you, Mayor, we do have an additional one for light truck tyres as well, which is forty two dollars.
That's the one, but what's the next one up?
Yeah, the large sort of tractor tyres and the large truck tyres. We don't process them ourselves, they're better off going straight to the tyre processors themselves. Obviously, they're very large pieces at a very high cost. There are commercial services available to them, we have, I guess, more than just affordable services to residential. It could be provided, but it would be at a very high cost considering the double handling of such a large tyre. It tends to just make much more financial sense for them to go straight to the processor.
Okay, so we can actually refuse those tyres at the gate? Right, and the other one on, let's see, asbestos. We don't actually ask for the bootload to be opened, the boot to be opened, do we? At the gate? Many weigh the vehicle in, weigh the vehicle out. If they just say if they've got general waste, how do we know if there's any asbestos in there unless we look in the boot?
Hey, well, yeah, look, people obviously can hide asbestos in amongst their waste, but it's a serious criminal offence to do that. So beyond sorting through everyone's waste, there's really no way we could stop someone doing that other than the fact that it would be a serious breach for law.
Sounds weird again then, well, maybe we should be making it, putting a notice at the gate to say, please advise if you've got any asbestos in a boot, within a boot.
Yeah.
It'll be better than nothing.
Yeah.
And for the safety of the gatekeeper, they've got to stay inside. But I think we should ask, have the notice there, write it under the window, have you got any asbestos, please advise. If it could be taken on board, Mayor.
Yes, I think it'll be taken on notice, thank you.
Okay, just on the larger truck tyres, look, I used to have a client years ago, he used to do recaps on the big stuff. But that business doesn't exist in Hobart anymore. So these tyres must be shipped to the mainland together to be recapped. Because a big truck tyre is not a hundred dollar tyre like we buy or a two hundred dollar tyre, it's thousands. So at least we can refuse it, that's the main thing. All right, thanks for that, Mayor.
That's okay, any further contributions? No, it's interesting to note that the harder things are to dispose of, like I noticed mattresses were, um, mattress thirty percent. It's so slow to break down, sorry, Alderman Ridley.
Should I move an amendment to include that notice for the asbestos as part of the recommendations?
No, it's operational.
It's all?
It's operational, but I'm not sure we need to include a sign.
And it's gonna be taken on notice?
No, don't worry.
Okay, all right, so as I was saying, mattresses are thirty percent, so it's kind of a user pay because not everyone's going to be disposing of a mattress every year. And then when you've got things like, I don't see what's there, um, something that, I think again, it was the tyres, which again are not things we all tend to dispose of. Now, this is, we've got two parts to the approval, so is everyone happy to move them together?
Yeah.
Okay, so Alderman Stringer, you move this motion, do you want to say anything?
No, that's to add to it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, okay, well, I'll put, I'll put the motion noting that there's parts one and two. And all those in favour, please raise your hand, thank you, carried unanimously. Item eleven, council fees and charges. Who would like to move this one? Come on. Thank you very much, Alderman Marks, and I need a second time.
I'll second it.
Thank you very much, Alderman Alderton. Alderman Marks.
Yeah, just to say that the fees and charges seem to be in line with all our costs that have unfortunately gone up, especially as the state government is putting a lot of our fees up that we have to pass back to them, so unfortunately, it's something we have to do and I think we're one of the councils that are actually on the lowest end of the scale of what our fees and charges are going to be going up, so I think we're doing pretty well there.
Thank you. Alderman Alderton.
Okay, thank you, I would just like to add, so the community are aware that basically fees and charges contribute to approximately sixteen point two, six eight million of our revenue, which is nineteen point six percent of council's total operating revenue. So reviewing and increasing charges from time to time is vital so that we continue to operate as a council in surplus.
Thank you, very good point. Any further discussion, then I'll take it back to all, oh, sorry, Alderman Cockshut.
Thanks, Mayor, I think it's also important to note that in the report, we have got a financial hardship policy which is available to any person or business, so if you are experiencing some financial hardship, please contact the council if you're an individual or business. Obviously, we'd like to work with people on a case by case basis, but that is there for those ongoing. So you can either by telephone, by calling this council or come into the council offices to speak directly.
Thank you, another good point. Any other contributions? No, so I will go back to Alderman Marks?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to put that to the vote. All those in favour, raise your hand, again, carried unanimously. Item twelve is the Financial Performance Report, the thirtieth of April, two thousand and twenty five. And I need someone to move this for me, please. Okay, thank you, Alderman Marks, and how about you, Alderman Stringer, would you like to second it? Thank you very much. Alderman Marks.
Yeah, just, we're sitting down actually yesterday and reading the report, it's been really good reading that we are actually ahead and we're going to keep ourselves on top and not in the black, in the red, I mean, we are keeping ourselves in the black.
Fantastic. Any other contributions?
Okay, to the officers of the council as well for keeping us on track with this financial report as well.
I think that's a good point. Anyone else? No, nothing definitely? No, I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour say aye, carried unanimously. Now, procurement exemptions, exemptions report. And another important one that needs to be moved. Thank you, Alderman Cockshut. And I need a second time. Thank you very much, Alderman Stringer. Alderman Cockshut.
Thanks, Mayor, I'm pretty straightforward, the council report in regards to the additional water levy sites for flood monitoring. So I think it's fine, we looked at the report in detail, so it just shows that we approved that exemption and move forward.
Yep. Potential council work, any other contributions? No, thank you, I'm gonna put that motion to the vote, all those in favour, raise your hand, yes, carried unanimously. Item fourteen, notices of motions, question on notice or without notice. Thank you, Alderman Alderton.
Thank you, Mayor, I have a question on notice without notice and I'm hoping Luke will be able to answer it. I've noticed that the shrine that was created for the young fellow that passed away tragically on the east corner at Main Road. It's really, I noticed that all the flowers, everything's gone and it's all been cleaned up and looks as it should. I'm just wondering, has things been, sorry, the mayor, have things been relocated? And have council found another space and created another shrine or?
Yeah, it's true, you may, I believe the items were then believed to have been buried a few weeks after the funeral and returned to the family.
We usually check for the place as well before we do a vote. Thank you very much.
Oh, I was just gonna say, Mayor, that it came up through the, our safety committee meeting recently, that these type of monuments or acknowledgements are very, very important to families and we've had a number over the years and we're actually, I believe, CEO can direct me a little bit more, perhaps we're looking at perhaps a popular land that may be valuable, that we can actually use for places of remembrance and continue on with those sort of activities of the family in a very nice way. Now, that's all I was asked after that meeting, please tell me if I was wrong, somebody, was I?
Very, I think there was a general discussion around the potential for council to investigate.
Investigate, that's what I'm saying. It was investigate, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, has that answered your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? None? So I need someone to, thank you, thank you, Alderman Slade and Alderman Ridley, seconded, thank you. So we're going to close the meeting and move in, close the open and open the close. We'd like to thank members of the public for coming and look forward to seeing you next time. And say goodbye to our audience and thank you for watching and we'll see you next month. And we'll put that to the vote, all those in favour? Carried unanimously.